Hello. Thanks for watching tonight, or today, or whenever you see this. When we filmed this video, it was Friday evening, November 3rd. Up to that point, and especially since then, some of the things that our guest said in this video did not make sense. What you see is an unedited version of the interview. Many people critiqued my interview because I did not hold her feet to the fire in that moment. True to her nature, and to mind as a very well-trained criminal investigator. I laid and waited. And continued in the following weekend to do my research to, as I say, practice, as I say, do my homework. As you watch this video, consider the answers that Jessica Skelton gives us. And listen closely. But also watch her mannerisms when I say some certain things. Like Moms for Liberty being fascist. We are extending an interview opportunity back to Jessica Skelton to join us again live Monday evening at the same time. If we do not have an interview, I will still be presenting all of the details that I've had at that point and have gained throughout the weekend. And you can decide how transparent and how independent she really is. Let's watch. And radio's live. Okay. All right, everybody. Welcome. Hey, it's Yergs. It is. We're a little late. That's my fault. I had a dog that decided to go pee at the last minute. Uh, but it's Yergs tonight and another dual episode of Yergs Tonight. And up the middle. Tonight, our guest is Jessica Skelton, the last in a series of one-on-one or group interviews. Our first one was a pair of guys, um, all running for the Boyer Town School Board. Jessica, welcome. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you for having me.
So first up, uh, as everybody by now knows, um, this isn't going to be anything confrontational. There's some definitely some sensitive topics that we will talk about tonight. But this isn't any sort of gotcha type of interview. So for those listening for the first time who are expecting to hear the Howard Stern side of me, sorry to disappoint, but that's not what we're going for. This is me just simply reaching out to my former hometown, a place that will still always be home. And getting as many of the candidates, you know, I was asked to bring a certain side of the political spectrum out. But with what I do at Up the Middle, it is more for remaining neutral. And for then anybody in Boyer Town who has ever known me, whether it's through ice hockey, or baseball, or law enforcement, uh, you know, that neutrality and doing the right thing are two things that help dear. So uh, let's get started. First, Jessica, uh, with regards to you, because that's what's tonight's about. What is your current job? And if there's anything from that job that relates to your position on the, on the school board that would help? What are those qualities or attributes?
I am currently and have been for quite a while, a financial advisor. I don't advise individual clients. I advise advisors. So I do a lot of case management, case design, um, and work with independent reps, which means they're not tied into one specific company's products and product solutions. We are able to offer hundreds of different companies' products and solutions. And with the regulatory environment, the way it is, it's a lot to keep up with. Uh, we rely on wholesalers of those companies. So I manage wholesaler relationships. And I manage a database of product solutions and work with advisors to find what's best for their individual client's needs. As an advisor, I think I did well with this career. I actually was a speech pathology major. And learned, uh, in graduate school that I didn't like that. Um, and I was working for a financial planning firm. I started out as a telemarketer. And then one of the advisors hired me as his assistant. I got his practice in order because I'm a planner. And, um, I went on to get my own licenses, uh, and become an advisor myself. I worked in a bank and sold investments in a bank. I got into the wholesaling arena with an investment company, or it's actually what's called a life settlement company. I got into national accounts and then I found the role that I'm in now, or created the role that I'm in now with my current job. Working with all of the skills that I learned in all of those years, 30 plus years, I think now. It's, uh, I'm telling tales about my age. But I think probably one of the best skills that I bring to the table from that job is that I am by nature a planner. And we help clients plan long-term for their goals, whether it's college education, whether it's retirement and the income they're going to need in retirement, or estate planning needs, or all of the above. And my forte is actually insurance and, um, helping with planning for those needs that nobody wants to talk about. With that, being a planner and also being a communicator, uh, we can't, we can't come up with a good plan for somebody without knowing about that person. And it's more than just knowing what their goals are. We have to know their risk tolerance. We have to know their timeframe. We have to know how they feel about pretty much everything. Their families, what they want to leave, what they don't want to leave, all of those inner workings with families. So I have to be a communicator too, to find where that need is so that we can find the appropriate solution to help them reach their goals. I think that skillset is important for a school board director. We have a lot of planning, especially future planning. We have in our region, um, in our district, but in our region specifically, we have neighborhoods that are coming in, that are going to be bringing so many more students to already overloaded schools and teachers. We have to think ahead. We have to plan ahead. We have to figure out how we're going to handle that problem as it continues. And we have to think outside of the box with it too. So I think being a financial planner and having done that for as long as I have in various aspects, and the skillset that comes along with that is important for a school board director.
So to clarify one thing, are you a challenger or are you running for reelection?
I'm a challenger. I have never run for office, ever.
Good. Okay. Yeah. Cause you're hitting on the same points that, uh, four candidates before you have said that and some with, some without, you know, the particular skills to deal with that firsthand. Like I, I think you and Krista probably sound like the two best based on professional, professional, uh, skills and, and outside the school board type, uh, relationships. So, uh, can we go back to the notes for a minute? Cause you actually hit on one of the other, one of the next questions. That's kind of a personal thing that you bring to the table. And you said that you're a planner. What else? Anything from outside of work, but from Jessica, that's going to be an asset on the board?
Well, let's look at it this way. I'm a wife. I'm a mother. I homeschool. I work full-time. I have to have good time management skills to do all of that. So I'm a good time manager. Times, you know, I have good time management skills. Again, the communication aspect, I'm a good communicator and the planner. I'm, I'm a good planner even personally. I, I plan out my meals for the week because we have a budget that we have to follow for the weekly grocery expenditure, you know, and I'm, I'm helping on sticking with that. And it's really hard. So I have to plan. I go to the grocery store probably just once a week. So I'm a planner that way too. So, um, all of that, I keep, I hate, keep coming back to that, but that is a skillset that's important that I use personally and professionally.
It's just, and I obviously not living in Boyer Town for more than 20 years. I don't see it firsthand anymore, but I'm following, you know, through, uh, the media and through what social media that I, uh, is relevant. I know it's going to be skewed. So, but, uh, it just doesn't sound like that type of planning is happening on the school board right now, or has been for a little bit.
I think it just depends on who you talk to. I have done a lot of research because I am on the outside looking in. As a homeschooler, I don't have a child in the school district any longer. I did have a child in the school district. We, um, well, we started out her education in preschool, of course, but then we did do private kindergarten because our district does not have a full day kindergarten program, and that's what we needed. And the expense of half-day kindergarten, then transferring her over, transferring her to a daycare was almost as expensive as just full-day kindergarten at a private kindergarten. So we of course did that. We did have her at New Hanover Upper Frederick for first grade. We had a successful year. It was good. We pulled her out in second grade just because we had a need. We were going to be out of the country, uh, for five months. We had a sailboat at the time and we sailed it over to the Abaco Islands to help them rebuild after Hurricane Dorian. And I could not come up with that many educational excuses for absences for five months. So we pulled her out of school and put her in online learning. When we came back, um, they had just shut down the schools the week prior to us returning. We almost didn't make it home because of all of the closures that followed us all the way up the coast on the intercoastal waterway. But we, we were into the online learning at that point, the charter schools, and we kept her in there for the third grade as well because our district didn't know what they were doing. And then we pulled her out in the fourth grade because we wanted to have a little more flexibility. And we also wanted our tax dollars to return to the school district. The whole point that I'm trying to make is that I have, we have been through private school. We've been through public school. We've been through online charter school. We've been through all of them to see that I know I need to ask a lot of questions. We would eventually like to get our daughter back into public school possibly. But I haven't gotten the answers to help me be comfortable for that. But in this process, I have been doing a lot of research and I've been looking at their old budget. The new budget wasn't available other than the summary, but the old budget. And I've been talking to people, um, and listening to the school board meetings and that sort of thing. And I, I can tell you, they, they are doing some planning for our future. I know that there are things that we're going to need to do, like roofs on the school buildings. They are planning for that. They have a surplus that they didn't have before. They did get that back. And they did take, I think, don't quote me on this, but it was over a million dollars, I believe, from that surplus to put towards the new school budget, but we still had to raise taxes. They could have taken more, but then that would have lowered that surplus. They're trying to rebuild that for all of the emergencies. So in the future, they don't have to keep taxing or raising the taxes. So yes, there is some forward thinking there. I can't speak to all of that because we're not, it's, we're not privy to that as citizens, you know, of the district. We're not in the executive sessions that they have. We only know what is put forth in those school board meetings. This is not all. There's a lot of inner workings that go on behind the scenes that we don't see. And I, I do know that. I know what I don't know. I, I know that there is a lot that I don't know. So.
Right. Uh, you, you touched about, uh, homeschooling. I just spent the past year, last, last school year homeschooling my son, uh, immediately after adoption. Where we moved to the schools where, and this question's going to get into another question. This is kind of, uh, it might be a follow-up and not necessarily on the preparation that I gave you, but it's, it's quite relevant to your life. Was that the only reason that you pulled your daughter back out and continued to homeschool or go to a charter school? That it was just your own personal life? Or were there any issues with the quality of the education that she was going to get?
That's a really good question and I'm glad you asked it. Um, when we first pulled her out in second grade, it had nothing to do with the level of education. We were very happy with what she received. I'm sorry?
That was the boat trip?
Yes, exactly. Exactly. We had been very happy with her first grade experience. It was hard to, we, we didn't want to send her back during the, the third grade because we didn't feel like it would be consistent. Everybody was squandering on what to do. Send them back. Don't send them back. And frankly, our, our district hadn't decided, I think it was two weeks before the school, uh, year started. And they hadn't decided. They were still voting on it at that point. So we, we just decided to keep her out at that point. But the longer we kept her out, the more we realized she was getting a really good education and we liked the flexibility. And I have a lot of flexibility in my job. My husband's retired, uh, state police. He has a lot of flexibility with his business. So we, we like being able to travel and take our daughter places like Colonial Williamsburg for an educational experience to the Bahamas to help rebuild a school. I can't think of better ways to educate her. But I also know what my limitations would be. So I started looking into what it would mean to come back to school. And in the fourth grade, we were still in the online program, but we pulled her out mid-year. Like I said, we wanted our tax dollars back to the school. And we wanted more flexibility than the online program was giving us. And I requested from the school curriculum. By law, homeschoolers are entitled to curriculum and curriculum materials from the district that are age-appropriate. I couldn't get any. The only planned curriculum is math. Everything else, they told me, we have a homeschool liaison, that the teachers meet. They look at the state standards and they develop their own curriculum. And they couldn't provide it to me. They showed me where links were that I could go into a link and look at the standards and that sort of thing, but they could not provide me the curriculum that was being taught to the children, to the students. That concerned me. I don't know if my daughter will be getting the education that we are providing her through homeschool.
Right. So you're saying that because the teachers meet and they go from there, not only could it, the, what's actually being taught and say, social studies be different from one elementary school to another, but from one elementary teacher to another?
Maybe.
Okay. Yeah.
I mean, I, I think that by doing it that way, it allows for less objective curriculum and more subjective. And it gives more, um, opinionated type or belief system that could be incorporate. I don't know that for a fact. I just couldn't ever get any. Okay. Well, I, I, you could say it. I don't know. Okay.
That's actually where we're going next. Um, I homeschooled my son in part for security. I don't, I don't tell people what county schools were in because it kind of does better for giving away my actual address and some of the opinions or things I say tend to piss some people off. I don't want to get any visitors, but, uh, the truth hurts sometimes, but, uh, the county that we live in was less than favorable because of security in the school itself. And also the quality of the education in the school. It's not one of the best in the state of Florida. And part of the reason was because it is one of the former breeding grounds for Moms for Liberty. And one of the things they did was this parental rights that without Moms for Liberty, you exercised and got as much as what you could in Boyer Town, even though there wasn't much there when it comes to the curriculum and what your daughter does and does not see during the course of a classroom session. So what? Continue on, I guess, your story of your relationship with the Boyer Town School District. What were the roadblocks? And, uh, were they administrative, like that they just, their hands were tied? Or was it anything like you were being roadblocked?
I don't think I was specifically being roadblocked. I, I don't think that there's a sign up saying, don't talk to Jessica Skelton. Um, I think that there's a communication issue. I think if I had to just pinpoint one thing that creates all of the problems, it's, it's about communication. One, the communication in that I couldn't get curriculum. I couldn't get it for fifth grade either. And I couldn't get it this year for sixth grade. All I got this year when I asked were two chapter books that they're reading in language arts. The liaison, to be fair, I did reach back out to the liaison and she is working or trying to get the curriculum from the middle school. But she said, please bear with me. I'm at the mercy of the middle school. My question is with that communication, why, why, why can't we access the curriculum? Why, why can't the homeschool liaison access the curriculum? When I was requesting it, I requested it first during the summer because as homeschoolers, we can start our homeschooling year on July 1st. And I wanted to get started. We buy our own curriculum, but I like to see what they're doing because if we ever send our daughter back to school, I want to make sure she is where she needs to be or beyond. So she's not having a problem catching up. I think she's well beyond at this point, but I just want to verify. And there's, it's very hard to find state standards in a way that are understandable to the average Joe, you know, the average person. So that, that continues to be a problem. The other issues with communication are, I started going to school board meetings, of course. It's important if I'm going to be running for school board. I mean, I've watched them before online, but I started making a presence there. But I, I did, I asked a question once in the meeting. I don't like not getting an answer when I ask a question. And that's what happens to everyone. You ask a question, you get your three minutes and nothing's ever said or done. That's an administrative issue, I think. I started sending emails then for the questions that I had. I started looking at the online program that we have in house. Well, it's not in-house. We buy it, uh, for Boyer Town. I didn't like that. And then I also started asking questions because there's the new law that will allow homeschooled students to come in and take certain classes and that sort of thing. Dual registration. And I started communicating. I would send it to the board and I would send it to all of the administration. I wasn't getting answers. So I'm, I'm kind of pushy. So I kept emailing. And I specifically was asking for answers and I would get answers sometimes. Other times I would get, not get answers. I'd have to send three emails. And then sometimes I just got varying answers to the same question. And I'm finding a lot of the answers that I'm getting are arbitrary that will benefit them, but not the people in the district. Um, and I was asking some very specific poignant questions. And I just became more and more and more concerned. You know, I asked a question and I mean, I know this is a hot topic and I probably want to kick myself for, for raising this topic on a podcast, but I asked specifically if I send my daughter back to middle school. Is she going to be going to the bathroom or changing next to a boy? Do we have a policy? What is that policy? So I can see it. We don't have a policy. We don't have any specific policy for that. We follow policy 103, I think is what she said. And that is the discrimination and Title IX policy that protects all students from discrimination. No, it doesn't. Not what, not what I've read that we do in our school district. So, you know, what's it going to be? Then I ask questions about security. Now I know that I can't know specifics about security. That would put the students and the faculty in harm's way. But I was asking for some general questions, things that are supposed to be listed online that I couldn't find. And it took me three emails to get an answer. And I don't, personally, I don't like the answer. We have two armed guards in the high school and now we have a new one in middle school west, but we don't have them anywhere else. That's not fair. That's not equitable to all students. Are you telling me that the high school students and middle school west students' lives are more important than the elementary school or middle school east? I don't like that. That doesn't sit well with me. We either need to do it all or none. And if we need to do it, if we're going to do it all, we need to figure out how to do the budget to make that happen. And there could be ways to do that if you think outside of the box. So, I mean, I could go on for hours and hours about the communications that I've gotten. But if I want to summarize it all into one thing, it's the inconsistent, difficult level of getting answers from the administration. And it just doesn't sit well with me to feel good about sending my daughter back. One, I, again, I couldn't see the curriculum or get the curriculum. And two, um, the, the lack of answers or the inconsistency in the answers. And the one other thing I want to say about curriculum, we do have a curriculum policy in our district. I think it's policy 105, if I'm not mistaken. But it does say that it should be posted and you should be able to request and see it. But I don't think that works for a homeschooler because they're not giving it to me and I, I am entitled to the actual curriculum. But for students in the district, for parents to see that, if they have concerns because the teachers are coming up with their own curriculum. And maybe, like you said, you, you made a very good point. One teacher could be teaching this. The other could be teaching something similar, but one is more thorough than the other than they're both going off to middle school. And one is behind and one is not, you know, so parents may be interested. It may not just be that parents are interested in the fact that it could be something that they don't want their kids to know. It could just be that they're concerned that they're not getting a level of education that they want for their children to get, whatever the concern. Parents do have a right to see that. However, with our policy, you set an appointment, you can do one per semester and that's it. I'm not happy with that. If we can't find the curriculum anywhere posted, I should be able to see all of the curriculum that my child is, is being presented. And I think it was suggested by Boyer Town Forward.
Let me jump in there a minute. Let, let me jump in there a minute because there's something even more obvious and blatant. And this is why I gave you the opportunity to say, if you were being roadblocked intentionally, not because of Jessica Skelton, but because of somebody that's homeschooling their kid and isn't, you know, a part of the Boyer Town School District team. One meeting per semester. Yet it's taking you three emails to maybe get an answer. You think you're leaving that one meeting with the answers you want?
No.
Or any of the answers at all?
No, I don't.
They don't think so either. That's why you're only getting one.
Right. Right. And I, I understand too. I mean, in one way, one meeting a semester, I mean, if you look at how many children, how many students we have, I mean, we have over 6,000 students. That is a burden on the teacher. So I, I understand that we have to have something reasonable. And I also understand that we have to be careful about having teachers post everything because I know that teachers do complement with their curriculum with ongoing, um, current events or that sort of thing. I don't know what the exact solution is, but I do know, again, getting back to the communication that, and, and I, I don't want to use the term parent rights because I don't know the formal definition of parent rights. I just know what I feel I deserve as a parent because I am the best advocate and teacher for my child. I know my child better than anybody. So what I would like to see is that I can know what they're being taught. I don't know what the answer is to be fair to teachers because they're already overwhelmed because they're having to develop their own curriculum. They shouldn't have to develop their own curriculum. They should be able to complement it. But I talked to some teachers while we were on vacation after the primaries and they were like, your teachers come up with their own curriculum? We're not curriculum developers. We would, we, we would find another job. They were like appalled, um, that our teachers, that we're asking our teachers to do that. Um, I think I got off on a tangent though, and I lost my.
That's all right. Do you know how long that's been the case? Like, like has, I, I graduated in 90. Do you know, has it been that, that far or?
I don't know.
I've got a co-host that would know the answer to that.
I, I only know. Yeah, I only know from when we started asking and that was when my daughter was in fourth grade, two years ago.
Okay.
So. The point I was going to make actually, the point that I was going to make is that I, I think when, when we get into that whole thing about parent rights, I think when people talk about parent rights a lot, they don't know that there is probably a formal definition, a legal definition. But I think what they're saying is, is that we have the right to know what's going on with our children in the schools when they're not with us. I think I read something once that people get angry and act out when they're fearful of something. And people are fearful of things that they don't know. So if we can do, if I were on the board, I would want to do a better job of allowing the public to ask questions and then we come up with some sort of formal answer so that people are getting the answers that they're looking for. So that we don't have to burden the teachers to sit down and review the curriculum and insult them to review their curriculum. Um, we just need to do a better job of providing what people need and they need to know information that they can't access otherwise. And we have to do that in better communication so that we can stop the anger and we can stop the divide. You know, we create a lot of divisiveness by not communicating with people. You know, if people just could communicate and, and act appropriately because they're getting answers. Uh, and I think as a, a board member, somebody said to me, um, you know what you're getting into. You're gonna, you're gonna be facing ridicule and you're gonna, you know, have people yelling at you and all of that. I'm like, I'm okay with it. I'm raising a child. First of all, that's, you know, me. Try raising a girl and homeschooling her, you know, it's, it's not, it's, it's not for the faint of heart. But I also know that people are angry and they, they lose their cool. But I also know that people are angry and they, they lose their cool when they're not getting what they're asking for and what they need. And I hope that I can be the person that shows, you know, I always say that I'm running my campaign and that I would be this as a school board member. Uh, and I have to look at notes because I, I know I'm going to blow it. It's my daughter's Taekwondo five tenants is that it's courtesy, integrity, perseverance, self-control and indomitable spirit. I have not done any mudslinging in my campaign. I refuse to do that. I don't need to promote myself by slinging mud on somebody else. I'm just going to promote my talents and my unique abilities and my education and, and, and what I'm bringing to the table. That being said, I hope to carry that over to being on the school board, that I will listen to people, even if they're yelling at me. Because I understand if they're yelling at me in a public setting, they can't be proud of themselves, first of all. And it can't be something that they can control at that point. They're just frustrated or they're fearful or scared, or they've just run to the end of that, that, that street and they've hit a dead end. They just need somebody to listen and provide the information they're looking for, and I hope to be that person. That all being said, I'm a very emotional, empathetic person. But I am also very good at removing emotion, being fact-driven and making decisions that are based off of fact. And in this case, and in the school board case, I would always look to the law first. And if there's not a law that we can base the policy on, then I would look to the voters or the people in the, um, district and, and go with the majority. It doesn't matter what I believe.
Right. And that's, that's another good point is that you're not there for you, you're there for the people that put you there.
Right, exactly. I'm there because I see some, uh, in like the, the communication issues that I'm facing. I feel like that's probably happening a lot with other people and that's causing a divide. I mean, that is causing, we have a divide for some parents in the school. It's not everybody. I mean, you can talk to some people and they're thrilled. It's, it, it really depends on their own personal experience and their involvement. I just, I, I hope to, to stop that divide from happening by bringing people together. And to do that, I have to remove emotion, my own emotion. And it's not for me, it is for our students, it's for our teachers, it's for the parent, the parents of the students. It's, it's for all of our faculty, it's for our taxpayers too. Cause I mean, let's get into it. I mean, I'm a taxpayer, I'm tired of seeing my taxes increase too and not know where it's going. I have to believe that it's going to a good place in our budget because I am seeing that the, the hole that we've been in is getting less and less, uh, is being filled in. So, um, I think that, you know, we're, we're doing a good job with that. But getting back to my other point, um, the courtesy, the integrity, the perseverance, the self-control and the indomitable spirit. Uh, I have to use self-control every day, just about when we get to math and how much my daughter hates it. So I think I can handle the school board and somebody coming after me.
Yeah, yeah. You mentioned a bunch of different things that are, all of which are gonna, you know, circle back and, and come back to the same, uh, a, a, a central point. One of which is raise taxes. And are we out of, you, you had said, and it's the first time I'm hearing it in the course of these interviews. You had said that we're out of a deficit. Is, is that correct?
We're not, we're not out of the deficit. Yeah, we're not out of the deficit, but we're doing a lot better than we have been. Yeah, they're improving it greatly, but we're not out of the deficit now. We did have to take money out of our reserves and raise taxes.
Okay, all right. And then with the quality of education and what you might see, you mentioned about having talked with other teachers. Uh, you've traveled up and down the, uh, eastern seaboard in a boat. What is, what have you seen with things like real estate values compared directly to that particular area's school system? It is.
With our school system?
In, in any case, I'll, I'll, I'll let you answer where you see fit. With a lesser quality school system, have you seen real estate values decline along with the quality of the education?
Uh, I haven't paid attention to what's going on in other communities. When we were on the trip, frankly, I was just focused on having my daughter do her online learning and do that while not getting seasick. Well, and, and not getting seasick at the time because I did get seasick. And yes, I lived on a boat for five months. I think I have indomitable spirit. But I can speak to our area where I'm living now. When we built our house, gosh, it's been probably 15 years. Value was high. It did take a little bit of a dive and, um, but we're, we've seen it come back. We just saw, uh, an appraisal and, uh, it's back up to where it was, even a little bit beyond. And I, there's a couple of houses that I've seen for sale that are prices I would have never imagined that they would be. So I, I have to say, I mean, and then I see all these new neighborhoods coming in and then the starting prices are not, again, not for the faint of heart. I mean, they're, they're decent prices. So I think our real estate market is fine in this area. Uh, and I think our schools are good in this area and people do want to be in our school district. I think we can just continue to do better and we can continue to, uh, listen to our teachers, listen to our parents, listen to our students. Uh, and I think we can communicate better. I know I keep coming back to that, but I, I really think that it will help people swallow the pill of raising taxes if we have to, to not cut classes. Uh, or, you know, or to not cut something other than classes that are important, uh, to continue paying our teachers what they deserve. Um, and, and the raises that I believe, uh, we're going to be giving them. You know, it's, it's, again, communication, even if you have to communicate negative news. Information is power and we need it.
Yeah.
And we don't have enough of that.
So, um, you talked about, uh, having made cuts or making cuts or I've learned through the previous interviews that there have been plenty of cuts already. What, what's your opinion about things like, uh, home ec, arts, languages that used to be in the junior highs, now middle schools and are no longer there? And what do you know about, uh, the inability to find some faculty members? In some cases substitutes for some of these specialty classes that forces these students to go to an extra study hall that wasn't actually on their schedule?
I think it's very upsetting if we don't have even substitute teachers and students are taken away from a class that they should be learning something and, and sending, being sent to a study hall. That's not okay. If that's happening, we're doing something wrong. I think that we need to think outside of the box when it comes to getting substitutes or even paraprofessionals. Uh, I looked up the standards of what we need for substitutes. And I think there was an emergency order probably put out there with COVID and I don't know if that's still in existence. But you don't, I don't, I can't remember exactly, but it was something, I don't think they had to have the teaching certificate or something, something to do with that. If they had a bachelor's degree, I believe. I think we could reach out to our community and find retirees that want to be coming into the schools that don't want a full-time job, but want to come in, they don't need the benefits. I think that we could do the same thing with paraprofessionals. I think that, uh, home ec is very important. I teach my daughter all the time how to cook. She makes her own lunch, she makes me lunch sometimes, it's great. She knows how to clean up the dishes and put them in the dishwasher. Does she do it all the time? No, but you know, she'll, she'll get there. She's helping fold the clothes now, you know, that kind of stuff. So she sees it going on and that's the benefit of homeschooling. But you know, I, I remember home ec, I took home ec, I think it was great. We all need to know that. We learn etiquette and home ec, I mean, that's important. If you're going to go out and be a real human as an adult and go in a business meeting and take people out for a business dinner. You need to know to put your napkin in your lap and how to cut the steak that you just bought for everybody. And we learn that from home ec sometimes. I mean, something, we're learning it from our families too, but I think home ec is very important. Foreign language is definitely important. So yes, we, we need to have those. I think we do still do a foreign language in the eighth grade. I was checking out all the different standards and planning ahead. And we do still do foreign languages in eighth grade, I believe. At least it's in the paperwork.
Okay, so that, that's something we'll have to check on then because I don't know if it was, um, Krista or Matt. One of them said that there are no languages or maybe even Donna, you Savage, when she was on both sides now with Jane and me. There were no languages in, it was referred to as world language. I guess is that foreign, what they're calling foreign language these days? There are no, there were apparently no world languages in the middle schools.
I did see something, uh, there's a, there's something that I printed out that goes over the different, uh, courses that are required of the middle schoolers and how many, uh, credits per quarter and that sort of thing. And it did for eighth grade have a foreign language.
Okay, all right.
So I, whether they're doing it in the school or not, I don't know. But in the paperwork from the middle school, it's there.
With, with only one meeting allowed per semester, it's probably going to be a while till we find out.
Probably, that one's not going to be high on the list, probably is, uh, math or social studies. Well, that's the other thing about social studies, we only offer that six month, one semester a year. They don't have it for a full year, same thing with science. I know.
Okay.
I know.
Yeah, that's definitely a change.
It took being outside of the district to see what was going on because, you know, of course, the responsibility is on my shoulders as the teacher. And we do have an evaluation done every year that we have to turn into the school. So I have to make sure that my daughter is getting the required standards. So when I started researching and I saw this, I'm like, what? This year for sixth grade, all they're covering in social studies is geography of the Western civilization.
And if you watch Jay Leno, you, you know that they're not doing a great job of that either. If you're familiar with the, when he had the, the Tonight Show.
I'm not awake that late.
It was, it was something like, uh, questions like, can, can you point to, um, Asia? And they point to like South Africa or, or.
Oh, absolutely.
Really? Okay, so we talked about, um, real estate values, taxes, curriculum. And it's all coming back to one of the things that you've stayed very far away from. And that is the, the backdoor organization of various political action committees. The, the previous four candidates are supported by Boyer Town Forward. We've got others that I've reached out to that I, I did not hear back from, and that's, uh, Candidates for Moms for Liberty and also 1776. What is your opinion on political action committees? What association do you have to any of them, if any? And, uh, uh, yeah, I'll let you go from there.
Okay, when I decided to run, like I said, I've never, uh, run for any office or held any, any office. I really don't, uh, I mean, I follow politics and the news and that sort of thing, but I, I really didn't know a lot. I didn't know what a PAC was. I mean, I'd heard of a PAC, I heard political action committee, but I didn't really know what it was all about. I just decided to run because I wanted to represent taxpayers and homeschoolers and parents and students and try and improve our communication in our, our district and try and keep our taxes from being increased. When you start to run for something, you get inundated, or at least I did. I got inundated by emails of groups that wanted to have me fill out a survey or get in their book of people and talk about your campaign and this and that. It was really, um, I wanted to say I was flattered, but I think everybody probably got them. But it was overwhelming. I did get one from, um, somebody about project or the 1776 project. And I looked at them, their website doesn't say a lot. It's very, uh, at your face, uh, sensational, critical race theory, CRT, blah, 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 you know, all that kind of stuff. If you get past that and look at the other text, there was something that caught my mind, my eye. And it said, and I, I, I am looking at notes for that because I can't memorize this, but it says, what turned me, okay, what turned me on to reaching out to them was we, it said in their, um, information on their website. We also support any type of education reform that promotes patriotic vision of America and its history. We just spent last year for our homeschool teaching American history. And I, I have to tell you, I didn't remember a lot of American history. I mean, I know the basics. I was so amazed at what I was teaching my daughter and what I was relearning. And it's so important. It is so important.
Flattering, is it?
No, there's a lot that's not flattering and we still need to know that. But there's a lot that's also flattering, okay? There's a lot that's unflattering. And if you ever have the chance, go to Colonial Williamsburg because they do such a good job covering everything. We saw a street show that talked about, um, the British eliciting the support of the enslaved to come and fight for them instead of the colonists. It was so well done to reveal what the true picture was, that it moved me to tears. So history is very important. But it's also important to know too, that we did a really good job for very little and that we had a lot of really smart people that were very brave. And I don't think that's really taught either on the sensational good side. What it really took to sign that Declaration of Independence and what they were really risking, especially if it didn't go well. So anyway, long story short, I'm digressing about, because I, it's just so fascinating and so important that we do this. That I did reach out to the 1776 project because I wanted to know, is that really true? Cause if that's the case, this is something I can jump on board with. That's not really what or how the conversation went. So yes, I filled out online the endorsement form because that's how you can get a conversation with them. Okay, I've been accused that I am not being, um, transparent enough that I, that I must have filled out that form and asked for an endorsement. No, I filled out the form so I could have a conversation and learn more. Cause again, I'm fact-driven. I want the facts, I go to the source. I don't trust anything that I see out there, I want the source. So I had a conversation and at the end of the conversation, I said, I'll think about things. And the next day I got back to them and said, no, thank you. It's a super PAC and under law with a super PAC, anything that they would do for me would be an independent expenditure. And by law, they would not be able to coordinate with me. I would have no control what they would be sending out and what would be promoted. And I wasn't comfortable with that, especially with everything else that's on their website. So I said, no, don't do it. They did it anyway. Again, because it's uncoordinated and they're a super PAC and they can do what they want. So they did send out brochures two times and I've heard, and I did receive those. People are saying, why didn't you stop them? I can't, they won't talk to me now. It's uncoordinated by law, they could get in trouble. But the, the brochure was simple. I mean, they clearly went on my Facebook page and Wendy Kratz, uh, Facebook page as well and found information. It's about raising, um, academic standards in Boyer Town. It's getting back to the basics of reading and writing, doing a common sense voice of communication. You know, offering more AP classes and computer science courses, things like that. So it was, it was information that they got from our platform. So, okay, that's what it is. Um, I've heard they sent out a, a pretty racy text recently. I have not gotten that, my husband did not get it. I've not seen that one other than in a screenshot. So, um, very avid.
Racy as in?
I think it had something to do about the, the Democrats are trying to take over or something like that. I don't know, I can't remember the exact words.
Okay, it's, and that's, that's one of the, shout out to, uh, one of the guys on my radio station. David Beckmeyer has a podcast called Outrage Overload. And that's what, you know, he and I and, and Jane and, and everybody at that station are constantly trying to fight is the constant us versus them. Yeah, it's always the Democrats fault if you're a Republican and if you're a Democrat, it's always the Republicans fault. And the anger, anger porn, as David says in, in his podcast. You know, people like Dan Bongino start their show. You're not going to believe what Biden did today. And then there's a pause. And now you're thinking of what President Biden did that's so bad. And you're getting all stirred up. And that's what texts like, uh, 1776 of apparently sent. Uh, it, it's, it's very subjective, probably a lot less fact-driven. I'll bet there are zero citations to the information that they're passing.
I think, I, I think really all it said, the text was something about the Democrats are trying to take over, get out and vote. I think was, I think that's what it said and don't hold me to that. Like I said, it, somebody put a screenshot on my Facebook page about it. And I said, why didn't you condemn this? And well, I didn't get one, first of all. And second of all, I And second of all, I did decline their endorsement and told them I did not want it. That being said, too, you asked me the question also, am I associated with any PACs or super PACs? I am not. After that meeting, after that phone, or yeah, after that phone call, I decided I, I, you know, I talk, talked to some people. I talked to my husband mostly. He's very intelligent when it comes to these things and level-headed.
Yeah, I gotta jump in here a minute. I, I gotta jump in here a minute. You said that he's a retired state trooper?
Yeah.
I know him. And I don't know why. Yeah. Uh, I started my career in the Philadelphia field office. And before that was a patrolman at North Coventry. But what I'm also wondering is if, how long has he been retired for generally? Give me an accurate ballpark for years.
He, I think he retired in 13.
Yeah, he would have, he wouldn't have been there because I was also a graduate of Camp Cadet. Uh, but he wouldn't have been an instructor when I was there because he'd still be in school too. Maybe a little bit ahead of me, but you know, still. Yeah, I, I know him. So I know, when I saw your name, I'm saying, I, Skelton, I know this name. And, and I don't know if you noticed it, but I almost fell off my chair when you said he was a retired state trooper. And I'm like, that's what, that's why that's, I know him. I know him somehow. But, uh, okay, so, um.
So anyway, getting back to the PAC thing, I'm not associated with any PACs. I decided, you know, I, I, I have my own unique talents. I have my own experience. I have my own knowledge. I have, you know, my own campaign. And after having the conversation and realizing that, you know, when you're learning about PACs and when you align with them, you don't always know where the funding is coming from and where the message is coming from, that you're supposed to be campaigning on. And I'm independent in my thoughts. And I, I don't, I did not want it to be held responsible to anybody else's belief system. I, like I said, I wanna look to the law and I want to look to policy and I want to hear the voters. And I don't wanna be swayed by money. So I self-funded my campaign. I did not receive even, I did not accept any contributions.
Wow. Not even from constituents?
Nope. I got offers, but I, I didn't want them.
Wow. That's aggressive. That's well done. Um, so that brings us to last question. From when, since when you started to now, what changes have you made in your campaign? What changes have you seen? Uh, do you get to see anything, you know, from the community and what they're saying, uh, from start to finish? Cause finish is Tuesday. So, um, what have you seen and what, what have you noticed so far?
I have canvassed a lot. And that's tough in my area because we don't live in a neighborhood where we can reach out and touch our neighbors.
And, and you are region three?
Yes, region three.
So New Hanover, Frederick.
Exactly. We're really spread out here. So I got my, I got my steps in, that's for sure. And went knocking on a lot of doors and I, I did, I had a lot of conversations and it's tough because I'm a talker and I really wanna hear from people. So I did spend a lot of time out there. I, I think I have not changed anything about my campaign. I, I went into it for all the reasons I said. And I've stayed true to that. And I plan to stay true to that if I get elected. Uh, I wanna do what's right by all if I can, but I know I can't make everybody happy. But I will listen to the majority. And I will do what's right. And, um, I think that our students are first and foremost, the most, the highest priority and our faculty. Our parents go along with our students though. And we do have to listen to our parents. Each student is unique too. Just like every candidate that's in this race is unique. Everybody is unique. And we, we need to involve the parents. And I know that, I know that our teachers want to involve the parents. And I know in a lot of cases, parents aren't involved. It just really depends. But we do have to do a better job at answering the questions or even presupposing what the questions will be and providing that information. So there aren't those kinds of questions and we don't get all of this, all these different groups talking and promoting and creating divisiveness. I mean, we're not gonna get anywhere as a district if we can't work together. And we can work together if we use those tenants of Taekwondo. I mean, I hate to be, uh, sounding all superficial, but you know, when I see my daughter and what she's doing in Taekwondo, and she's been at it since the first grade. And she's about to test for her black belt. And I see what goes into that and the perseverance and the indomitable spirit and the self-respect that they teach and the amount of work that she's had to put into that. If we all just did half of that in our district, we'd be rocking and rolling and being the number one district in the state. We've got the bones. We just need to build it. We've got the foundation. We just need to build the house and put all of the extras in it.
Excellent place to wrap it up. Jessica Skelton, thank you very much. I wanna, I appreciate, uh, you joining and, and actually reaching out to me. Uh, we, uh, I'll tell everybody that, uh, I found out about you, uh, that, uh, there was somebody not associated with either the two major sides.
But I am, I am a Republican. I am a Republican.
Oh, that's, yeah, apparently I, I called you a Democrat last night and, uh, your speaker and smacked me. But, uh, shout out to Phil Hadad who, uh, brought me, brought you to my attention. Uh, that you were an independent as far as, uh, not being associated with any political action committee. And, uh, he, I don't think he said what, what the party affiliation you had. So Jessica Skelton from region three. Uh, thank you for joining us and, uh, good luck on Tuesday.
Thank you. Thank you so much for having me.